Takes a long time when you're waiting for the res.
Okay, it's officially nine thirty. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Role, please. Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Savaraja.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner.
Here.
Commissioner Gamash.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
The first item is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savaraja.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we have review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and from Human Services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Look, second by Commissioner Schulte. I didn't recognize the voice. (laughing).
Sorry, I'm sure.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. The next is approval of minutes from our March twenty-sixth County Board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Under Chair's remarks this morning, we are honored to have Judge Bethany Fountain Lindberg with us to talk about an upcoming event that has become one of those events that the community, I think, really looks forward to. It's designed to educate and assist people navigating the court system and even helping them resolve some issues that they may have. So Judge Lindberg, thank you for joining us today and invite you to come up and tell us a little bit more.
Thank you. It's always a good day when I can start the morning visiting with the Commissioner, so thank you for allowing me to be here today. Our big Law Day event is coming up. It's Friday, April twenty-sixth. Again, the times will be from nine a.m. until three p.m., although if you recall from last year, we ended up starting at seven thirty in the morning and ended at about five thirty in the evening. But we're limiting it to those hours to make sure that we try to serve all those who come on board and serve them well. The theme this year is free speech, free press, free society. Still a timely topic, even though the founders crafted all of that language so, so many years ago. We're constantly revising and pushing the limits on that free speech, free press. And so I look forward to that. This year, we are having the same behind-the-scenes tours for anyone from the public or employees that would like to come in and take a tour of the courthouse and see some of our new courtrooms, our new secured courtroom for the bail calendar and the like. Those opportunities are present. We have legal services clinics this year. Those are free to all of the citizens or residents of Anoka County. It's free legal advice. We have attorneys onboard and on staff that are there to assist people. There are no eligibility requirements. Anybody who walks in is going to be able to get legal advice on family issues, probate, guardianships, conservatorships, general civil matters, expungements, meaning landlord-tenant type of actions, as well as criminal matters. They can address outstanding warrants. They can address and work with the Department of Motor Vehicles to obtain their license back. It's a day for all of those various different types of legal activities. It's a way for the judicial system and the county to come together and show the residents of Anoka what we're made out of and what we have to offer and what we can do in trying to just demystify the courtroom and then make it an inviting and welcome place. In addition to that, we have some educational activities. We have an informational fair that will take place down at the lobby. We also have the high school educational component this year. Instead of running two courtrooms with two mock trials, we're running three courtrooms, three separate mock trials. And I appreciate Mr. Palumbo, your services, offering your attorneys to come and help the students on that day. They filled a hole for us, and I appreciate that. We're running three mock courtrooms, mock trials. This takes a lot of staffing, but it's the one item that the kids really enjoy. The students will have an opportunity to meet with the canine and learn about how you train a canine and what they're specialized in and how they work. And this year, we're bringing in Vina Singh from the Medical Examiner's Office, who's going to talk about and set up a mock scene for the kids and talk about forensics and how her job works and what she looks for. So I'm interested myself to see that. We are maxed out in capacity for high school students. We have Centennial High School coming in. We have a conglomerate from the Anoka Hennepin High Schools coming in. And we also have Regional High School that will be present and take place in those activities. We added a track last year for adult education, and we are continuing that trend. It's free continuing legal education credit for attorneys. It's also open to the public. We have three very exciting events planned for that track. One, we have Chief Judge Ed Cleary coming from our own Minnesota Court of Appeals. He will be talking about freedom of speech, freedom of press, and talking about the seminal Minnesota case when he was an attorney and push that through the system. He's a fantastic speaker, and that will be very engaging. We have a second presentation on body cameras. We have a lieutenant coming down from Duluth to present on using a real-life example of two different officers wearing two different body cameras and how our eyes can trick us into thinking one thing when the scenario may be something totally different. And we have a final track, which is perhaps not quite as interesting, but necessary nonetheless. We have an accountant, who's also a lawyer, who's coming in to talk about tax changes and tax consequences and what that could mean for family matters such as divorce or separation and that type of thing. Those will go on at the same time as the Students Legal Clinic and the other courtrooms that are running as well. The event has expanded, as Chairperson Savaraja said. It's a wildly enjoyable event. We now have retired employees, retired judges, coming back just for that day because they enjoy it. And everybody works really hard, but it's very rewarding and satisfying at the same time. And the event has not only expanded outside of our employees, but Wright County is now engaged, Washington County is now engaged, and they're modeling their programs after Anoka County. And we even have Kandy Ojai up in the Eighth District that's starting for the first year based on this model. And so I appreciate all of the support that the county has provided and all the different departments. We all come together and try to make this a great event, and I would invite the public to come and see what we're about.
Well, thank you so very much, and thank you for your incredible leadership. It has been really fun to watch how this has really become that collaborative partnership, but then also how it has grown. And it's fun to see it not only meet the needs of residents who are able to come and access some of those services and feel more comfortable coming into that setting as well, but then providing education for our youth and giving them a glimpse of what the system really entails and that they can also explore, you know, potential career pathways moving forward. So again, thank you so much for your incredible leadership and your work, and we're looking forward to a wonderful day. At this time, I would like to offer Resolution twenty nineteen dash forty-four proclaiming April twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen as Law Day in Anoka County. And I will invite the rest of the county board to join with me in offering that resolution.
If I can, Madam Chair, I just want to echo certainly your thoughts on Judge Fountain Lindberg's leadership. You know, every project needs somebody to get it off the ground, and this is the person here that has devoted a lot of time and energy, and I've witnessed that personally. And this model that has now been created is basically because of the work of Judge Fountain Lindberg. So I certainly want to commend her publicly for all the time and effort that she has put in doing this, outside of her judicial duties, by the way. She was putting this together for the greater good of the community, and I certainly want to publicly thank her for all her work and am more than happy to collaborate with her in making this a success for people in Anoka County. So thank you, Judge Fountain Lindberg.
Thank you. Thank you for your kind words.
Thank you. Other discussion, comments? If not, all those in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. And if you want more information about what is happening during Law Day, there's a complete schedule at www.mincourts.gov/AnokaLawDay2019. So thank you again, and thank you again for your leadership and your passion. You know, I think that that is what has really made this as successful as it is. Your passion for this is really contagious, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Our second item today, we are pleased to recognize a dedicated selfless individual and creative, health-conscious committee members who are working diligently to improve public health within our communities. I'd like to ask Janelle Hubbard, Director of our Public Health and Environmental Services Department, to begin our presentation. Janelle.
All right. Hello, Madam Chair and members of the board. Anoka County has been presenting the Public Health Recognition Awards since two thousand and six. We receive nominations from the public, private, and nonprofit sectors. A selection committee composed of public health professionals and members of the Community Health Advisory Committee select award recipients based on their leadership, efforts to improve community health, collaboration, and advocacy in our community. It is now my distinct pleasure to introduce our first award recipient. With us today is Jeannie Freitag, an RN and Faith Community Nurse who attends eight family table meals a month in Anoka County. Lila Pagels, an Alaina Nurse and Faith Community Nurse Program Coordinator, submitted the award nomination. I'd like to ask Commissioner Savaraja to tell us more about the impactful work Jeannie is doing in our community.
Thank you, Janelle. Jeannie is so important to the success of Family Table Meal Program in Anoka County. Through this program, the underserved and underprivileged can eat free meals at more than a dozen participating churches in our area. At the meals Jeannie attends, she draws on her medical expertise and experience of interacting with people of varied backgrounds to help attendees improve their physical and emotional health. Jeannie offers free health screening at the meals. This serves as a non-threatening way of inviting individuals to have conversations with her about their health issues and other challenges. Participants receive the results of the screenings, which include cholesterol, glucose, HDL, and blood pressure. And then they are provided with the appropriate health education based on their results. Jeannie is a tireless advocate for referring and connecting people to the appropriate helpful agency. Examples include Anoka County Public Health, Human Services, the Lee Carlson Center for Mental Health and Well-being, the Alexandra House, and support groups. She was instrumental in convening the Family Table Meal Coordinators and Anoka County Statewide Health Improvement Program staff to explore ways of providing more healthy food choices at the meals. This collaboration allowed SHIP to purchase salad bar accessories that make it easier for volunteers to offer more fruits and vegetables. In addition to Jeannie's involvement at the Family Table Meals, which by the way, she said she started within nineteen ninety-five, which is absolutely incredible, so dedicated servant. And in twenty eighteen, she also took on the role of organizing the free monthly clinics at Stepping Stone Emergency Shelter. She coordinates dates with Stepping Stone staff, recruits volunteers, and makes sure that adequate supplies are on hand. I'd like to say congratulations to Jeannie for the difference that she's been making in the lives of the people who sometimes struggle simply to make ends meet. Your dedication and your passion is something that we are just so incredibly proud of and grateful that you serve our community in such an amazing way. So I'd like to present you with this award.
I was told I can make a few remarks, so thank you. I've done this since nineteen ninety-five, the family table, and it never ceases to amaze me what can happen when you provide people with a safe place and a free meal. I didn't, it started with one church, and then it blossomed into twelve, and now it's ten. And people will approach me with things that I'd never expect. I come to check a blood pressure, and now somebody says I'm a victim of incest and I haven't told anybody. And I'm grateful that I can make a connection in the community. Anoka is exceptional, that I can find a resource for that person. And there's a lot of resources. I've made many, many calls into this building trying to find people resources with homelessness, joblessness. If a family shows up and they have three kids in the car and it's zero degrees, and it's Saturday evening, and they're living in their van, I can make a phone call and find housing for them for at least the weekend with a social, an emergency social worker. I'm so grateful that I have that resource, so many resources at my fingertips that I can connect people that are in dire straits that will approach me. And I'm thankful for Alaina Health is willing to contribute in my role to continue to allow me to do this. So I'm thankful. As far as Stepping Stone goes, Lila started this many, many years ago. Lila, could you wave?[1118.31][1118.31](laughing). With Craig Mom and Dr. Nathani. And the clinic is gorgeous because people care and they feel safe. They can approach us, and they trust us to share with us. So I've just taken this over about a year ago, but it's an honor to work with such a great team in this community. So thank you, everybody.
Next, I'd like to introduce our second award recipient, the Just Move It Wellness Committee from Metro North Adult Basic Education in Blaine. Andrew Doherty, Extension Educator from University of Minnesota Extension, made this nomination. Here representing the committee is Metro North Adult Basic Education Supervisor Molly Liberto, who formed the committee along with five other members who represent each job function within that organization. I'd like to have Commissioner West tell us more about the committee and what they've done to improve the health of employees at Metro North Adult Basic Education.
Thank you, Janelle. I had an opportunity just a few minutes ago to find out more details about this wonderful group of people. This committee devoted time and energy into advancing the culture of wellness for employees at Metro North Adult Basic Education in Blaine. Their leadership led to an informed strategy that engages staff to take part in wellness activities as part of their workday. A physical activity circuit program was established with the assistance of SHIP. To create excitement about the new program, the committee members brought in a certified personal trainer to lead a demonstration of how to use the new physical activity equipment. To create a shift in the culture at the workplace, the Just Move It Wellness Committee has worked to make active movement a regular occurrence at North Metro ABE. This has come in the form of incorporating yoga bingo into meetings. I hope you're going to tell us about that.[1262.04][1262.04](laughing). Providing kitchen materials to increase opportunities for healthy food choices, hanging posters encouraging stretching in the workplace, and efforts have been made to encourage peers to work out together. Sixty-five percent of employees have engaged in physical activities for an average of twenty-two minutes per session since the formation of the Just Move It Wellness Committee. Congratulations to the Just Move It Wellness Committee on its impactful initiative to increase the wellness of the workplace at the North Metro Basic, Adult Basic Education. Moving more often can be a challenge, lack of time, motivations, other factors that seem to get in the way. But when an organized group like Just Move It Wellness Committee takes the lead, good things happen and people's health improves. So I would like to give you this plaque.
It's not just me, trust me. I am just completely honored to be here today. And we'd like to thank the board and Anoka County Public Health, the Anoka Hennepin School District, and Andrew with SHIP. Tell you that man is a saint. Phew. He put up with this group of ladies in our meetings and all of our random thoughts we throw at him, and he came back to us with a well-organized, thoughtful plan. So thank you, Andrew. A little bit about who we are and what we do. So we are Metro North Adult Basic Education, and we are a consortium of eight school districts in the North Metro area. And together, we offer free programming for adults seventeen years of age or older. We offer everything from a pre-literacy class, which are folks that have just newly entered our country, perhaps coming from their homelands where they don't have a written language, have never held a book, all the way up to college prep. So we run the full gamut. In order to be part of our program, they just need to have an educational goal. We run year-round. We're five days a week. We're evenings. And we are in multiple locations across the North Metro area to offer programming in locations that are most, wherever we're needed. How's that? We ebb and we flow, and we move around. We try to meet the needs of the community. This has been a long, yet very rewarding process to get our team up and going. And we started out contacting SHIP to try to find resources for our students, and we ended up finding wellness resources for us, which is something that we typically don't do as teachers. We don't take the time to put our needs out there. So with this, we were able to come up with a sustainable wellness plan. And due to this committee behind us, we have kept it going, and we plan to for many years. With that, with SHIP, with the grant from them, we were able to purchase equipment to do circuits. We do yoga during our meetings. I am bingo. We do chair stretch bingo. We purchased kitchen equipment so we can do healthy food prep at work. And we have also implemented a monthly wellness challenge. So we've done things like a step it up challenge where we needed to commit to so many steps we wanted to do a day, and we were given parameters to do so. Right now, our well, our happiness challenge ends tomorrow. So for the past six weeks, staff have encouraged to do something that causes them happiness every day. So, and we're also hoping that the impact from this grant and this equipment not only just helps with our staff wellness, but also with our students and other sites as well. So I would like to introduce the committee. So we have Amy Brooks, Mary Need, Polina Huffman, and Linda Keller. Once again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd just like to express my thanks and appreciation to our award recipients today for the many ways that their efforts make our community such a better place to live, learn, and work. And so thank you for your support, and once again, thank you for coming out today and supporting our recipients. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Janelle, and thank you again to our Public Health Award winners. Your caring and perseverance in our community in order to make it a healthier place is truly inspiring. So again, thank you so much for your incredible work. Next, I would also just like to take a moment to remind everyone of a couple of events that are coming up. First, we have a huge career fair going on Wednesday, April tenth, at the Anoka Technical College, and couldn't happen without that incredible partnership. More than two hundred area employers will be offering information about exciting job opportunities at the event. The career fair runs from ten a.m. to two o'clock p.m., and everyone is encouraged to attend. Then, on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, is our Senior Expo at the Lord of Life Church in Ramsey. And if you have not been there, it is a must-attend. It is not only for seniors, but also for children of seniors who may be looking for resources. It's open to the entire family. You can visit the information booths, enjoy a free pancake breakfast, which I will tell you is something that people absolutely love. Get a blood pressure check, even a mini massage. There always seems to be some musical entertainment as well. So please join us Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from nine a.m. to noon. Something, again, that you don't want to miss. And now on to committee reports, beginning with the Management Committee Report. Commissioner West.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My items are just informational.
All right. Thank you. Then we will move on to the Transportation Committee Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our committee had the opportunity to meet on Monday, April first, here in the Government Center at nine a.m. We have five items for your consideration today. First, the committee recommends approval of a resolution encouraging the Minnesota Legislature to pass and recommending the governor to sign a bill that brings adequate funding to Minnesota's statewide transportation system. The resolution is in your packet, and it basically calls out for new revenue that is sustainable. And it really spells out, more than anything, the needs for our system and the deficit that has shown up in the transportation funding over the years. It is not supporting any specific plan. It's not supporting any specific type of tax or where this revenue may come from. It's just simply reminding the legislature, it's their responsibility, to fund the state highway system and to help build out the system throughout the state. And so it's our, we're working through the Association of Minnesota Counties to get all eighty-seven counties onboard to pass this resolution. We're well on our way. We're about halfway there right now, and the rest of the boards will be meeting in the next week or two to solidify their votes. So I'm asking, the committee is asking, we did unanimously support this in our committee, so we're looking for the rest of the board to concur at this point. And with that, I would offer the resolution, Madam Chair.
So the resolution has been offered. Is there further discussion?
Just, Madam Chair, just a clarification. Commissioner Schulte, I just need a clarification. Is this, is this saying we need additional funding sources, or is this saying that based on the Minnesota State Constitution where the state's
a lot of different sources that are currently there. So it's not necessarily calling for a new revenue source. It is calling for new revenue to fully fund the system.
Madam Chair, I appreciate that because I think we have a priority concern in the state of Minnesota where we prioritize some things above other things. And, of course, transportation and public safety kind of go hand in hand, and we witness a fair amount of people being put in harm's way for fifty-plus years. And so, I'm supportive of this resolution, but I want to be clear that seeing as we're one of the highest taxed states in the Union, that perhaps we're paying enough in taxes.
And, Madam Chair, if I could just have Doug Fisher, our county engineer, expand on this. This was worked thoroughly through the statewide engineers committee, or, excuse me, their board, and Doug's a big part of that, so he may have some insight here for the rest of us. If you don't mind.
Doug.
Madam Chair, county board members, my name is Doug Fisher. I'm the Transportation Division Manager and County Engineer. I also do serve on our Minnesota County Engineers Association Board of Directors and our National County Engineers Association Board of Directors as well. But yesterday, we did have a board meeting, and we did talk specifically about this resolution. And it did come through the Association of Minnesota Counties or Transportation Committee, which comprised of county board members and county engineers statewide to address this issue. There is, the need is great, and, again, the additional funds that are needed were very, I think can be very clearly identified statewide and even locally. And so, through a lot of collaboration, they came to this resolution, which does support that increase in funding. Doesn't say you need to increase the sources of that. And we had a lot of conversation about this at our Board of Directors meeting yesterday. We all support it. We do like the language in it. We feel that it gives us the flexibility to make the necessary funding available to meet our needs. And it does not support any specific increase in any area, but, again, to address the issue as a whole.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, there's plenty of discussion, but I understand.
So, thank you, Commissioner Look. And for an example, if you look last session, I believe it was, where they took the sales tax on auto parts and moved that into transportation, a portion of that was moved, not all of it was moved. So I think that this really leaves that wide open for options. Commissioner.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to draw a distinction because the flavor of the day right now is a twenty-cent gas tax increase, and so I want to make sure that we're, for the edification of the public, that they understand that while we support transportation funding, we aren't necessarily trying to fall in line behind that. But case in point is, Doug, I know that you've had frustrations with this. We plan an existing roadway, and all of a sudden, there's milk wart, or whatever the case is, that has to be transplanted by every plant, and the cost goes through the roof to do that. Or perhaps it's Highway Ten where it's been there for the last, who knows how many, fifty, hundred years, and to just expand it, we need to try and determine if there's Indian Barrow grounds, which probably were already disturbed at one point, but there's additional costs that are driven because of that. So I get a little frustrated when they say, "Well, we need more money," but we're going to continue doing some of the costly things that probably shouldn't be happening to begin with, so. Soapbox.
Doug.
And, Madam Chair, on that aspect of dealing with environmental issues, our County Engineers Association has taken a lead. Actually, there is some clarification legislation this session to help resolve that issue of rare and endangered species that were in existing county right-of-way in already disturbed areas, you know, ditches that had been cut, and then, you know, plants that migrate into those areas. They never were there to begin with, but inadvertently they're now. And so, trying to deal with that. And, again, it's, existing state law allows that exemption. It's just the interpretation of state agencies, in this particular case, the DNR, on whether that requires mitigation or not. And so, we're just, we've taken the lead on that to help minimize those costs for, when we do have reconstruction projects or dealing with drainage issues or the assortment of safety issues that we have to deal with on our highways. So we are dealing with all aspects of not only increasing the revenue this resolution would support, but eliminating some of those unnecessary costs that make our highway projects so expensive. So we're working on both ends of that.
Thank you, Doug. Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for bringing this up in a little bit more detailed conversation, Commissioner Look, because I know when I was in the committee meeting for this, I was trying to wrap my head around what this meant, new streams versus a gas tax or not. Personally, I don't have any problem with exploring a gas tax. However, I do like the language as well because this is basically essentially saying that we're going to get creative in getting additional funding for something that we really need, which is obviously transportation. So thank you for fleshing out this conversation. I appreciate that.
Okay. And now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Number two, the committee recommends approval to enter into a joint powers agreement with the city of Blaine for a multi-agency joint effort project to place batuminous surfacing on an access road servicing several parking areas at the National Sports Center in the city of Blaine. By way of explanation, there's some new large parking lots that will be developed for the National Sports Center's use for soccer and other events that take place there. It will also benefit the TPC and the Three M Open as vehicles will park there. So we're in a joint agreement with Blaine to build the access road to those parking lots from One Hundred and Fifth to One Hundred and Ninth, I believe.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Zabraja.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The committee recommends award of contract to Pember Companies for the Highway Department trench drain replacement at the transportation building in Andover in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand, five-hundred dollars. This is in our Highway Division garage, and it's a large drain, runs the length of the building, and it collects all the drainage from the vehicles, which is usually salt-ridden, and it has deteriorated through the years, and it's time to replace it. Also involve removing some of the concrete, an apron, per se, right around the drain so the concrete and the drain system will be replaced.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Zabraja. Aye. Motion carries. Next item.
And our last action item for you today, the committee recommends approval to enter into a license agreement with Francois Zongo to allow for a portion of the parking lot and curb to remain in the county right-of-way along Sunset Avenue Northeast for the parcel located at one oh one three zero Sunset Avenue.
And I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll just explain this very simply. It's a very small portion of a parking lot and curb that happens to be in the right-of-way of an area we're working. It doesn't propose a problem. It's not a crash hazard. It's not a site hazard. So it's something we will have, sign a license agreement that will stay with the property.
Okay. And roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Zabraja.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And, Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Schulte. Now we'll move on to Finance and Capital Improvements Committee Report. Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, thank you. The Finance and Capital Improvements Committee met on March nineteenth. We came away with one action item, and that item is the committee recommends the county board adopt Resolution two thousand nineteen dash F two approving the issuance of a multifamily housing revenue refunding note by the Anoka County Housing and Redevelopment Authority under Minnesota State statutes, chapters four sixty-two C and four sixty-two A. If you'll note there, these are townhomes that were built, financed back in two thousand and two, along Sunwood and Ramsey, and there was a balloon payment on one of them that was due May first, two thousand and nineteen, and they're asking to refinance this and issue a revenue note through the Anoka County HRA. This is a conduit bond. It's a pass-through bond, so it doesn't apply, or it doesn't affect our bond rating, doesn't affect our debt necessarily, but it's paid through ACAP, I believe, and they're present here today, so.
All right. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I will offer it.
Resolution has been offered. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
I will be abstaining since I sit on the board of ACAP.
Commissioner Zabraja.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And, Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Look. Now we will move on to Intergovernmental and Community Relations Committee Report, and then I also have a chair report. And we actually, this was mentioned during the IG committee, that we would be bringing a chair report forward as we gathered additional information. So for informational purposes only, just wanted to let the committee know that we had a great presentation from Chris Lord from the Anoka Soil and Water Conservation District, and something for those of you who were not able to be there that I actually found was very interesting is that they actually have developed a product and have a patent that they actually are able to generate some revenue from and are working in the state of New York, actually, to be able to address some of their needs utilizing that patent. So a really unique situation for a soil and water conservation district, and appreciate their ingenuity in trying to address some of the needs that they have. So very fascinating, and we'll look for more great things to come from them. And then, also wanted to let the committee know, or let the county board know, that the committee basically voted to send a letter expressing opposition to the Anoka County Legislative Delegation on House File twenty-three fourteen and Senate File twenty-three seventy-two that provides certain spending and reporting requirements for the Rice Creek Watershed District. Essentially, what it does is it says that it's something like ninety percent of the revenue collected within Washington County has to be spent within Washington County. The problem with that is that, first of all, they have a number of large projects that will be coming up that will be impacting not only Washington County and Anoka County or designed within that area. But when you look at watershed districts, they're based on hydrology. And so, something that you do in one part of the district positively impacts the entire district. And so, it really defeats the purpose of having a watershed district if you are essentially going to say the revenue collected in a given county can only be spent in that county. So we thought it was important, it really sets a bad precedent for all watershed districts, really across the state, but literally would tie the hands of the watershed district in really doing the work that needs to be done. So wanted to make you aware of that. So the IG chair report is that we are recommending that the county board approve amending the two thousand and nineteen Anoka County Legislative Platform to include in the supporting with others category opposing House File nineteen seventy-one and Senate File twenty-one fifty-five, which makes very broad changes to Minnesota's forfeiture laws, as the proposed legislation would have a significant negative impact on public safety. And I know that our sheriff is here today, and our county attorney as well, who both have sent letters of opposition, as well as, I believe, their associations as well. And so, we just wanted to make sure that we sent a strong message to our delegation that this really could be devastating for public safety overall. So I would move approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Again, Madam Chair, members of the board certainly appreciate the action taken this morning. As with all legislation, the devil's in the details, and as we have examined the details of this particular bill, we do not think it would be in favor of public safety. We think there are a lot of changes that could be made, certainly to accommodate the interests of those that are proposing this particular bill, but also accommodate the interest of public safety and law enforcement, to make sure due process is followed, but also that proceeds from criminal activity do not remain with criminals, that they are taken, and to provide a disincentive for those that are engaging in criminal activity. So I certainly appreciate the board's support this morning and including it in their legislative package to be able to have what we feel would be a really good and thorough discussion of the issues, and we don't think that has occurred at this point. So, thank you for that.
All right. Draggy, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've really appreciated the emails that have gone back and forth, and I've learned a lot about this bill in a short period of time just listening to people and their comments. So I really appreciate that because you get some of these bills, and you don't exactly understand what it is that they're doing, and having those involved on a day-to-day basis, whether it's the sheriff or the county attorney, and others at the legislature kind of discussing what's happening, it really helps you understand it better. So I've appreciated that from everybody's input. Thank you.
Commissioner Meisner, did you have something?
Oh, I just wanted to make sure you saw him.
Okay. Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, I too appreciate the emails that went back and forth. Kind of helps to educate on the topic, and that it's an issue. Certainly, it's being discussed. There was some talk of the Supreme Court ruling on some of this, and I guess, you know, while an email can only cover so much, it didn't really say whether or not our current state law complied with current Supreme Court decision, or if this is above and beyond what the Supreme Court ruled on, or... So I'm not sure that we're prepared to answer that today, but I think it's, you know, it certainly will want to comply with what the Supreme Court has decided, but as a state, but that's above our pay grade, that's on their end, and certainly, I would want to make sure that we, when we advocate for or against something, that we take that into consideration, that we aren't necessarily trying to disagree with a Supreme Court decision. Not that we are, that's not what I'm saying. I just didn't know through that discussion whether or not we had that clearly defined.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Look.
If I can, and, Madam Chair, Commissioner Look, we certainly take that into account also, and I think those issues have been addressed. attorney, and others at the legislature kind of discussing what's happening, it really helps you understand it better. So I've appreciated that from, from everybody's input. Thank you.
Commissioner Meisner, did you have something?
Oh, I just wanted to make sure you saw him.
Okay. Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, I too appreciate the emails that went back and forth. Kind of helps to educate on the topic, and that it's an issue. Certainly it's being discussed. There was some talk of, of the Supreme Court ruling on some of this, and, and I guess, you know, while an email can only cover so much, it didn't really say whether or not our current state law complied with current Supreme Court decision, or if this is above and beyond what the Supreme Court ruled on, or... So I'm not sure that we're prepared to answer that today, but I, I think it's, you know, it certainly will want to comply with what the Supreme Court has decided, but as a state, but that's above our pay grade, that's on their end. And, and certainly, I would want to make sure that we, when we advocate for or against something, that we take that into consideration, that we aren't necessarily trying to disagree with a Supreme Court decision. Not that we are, that's not what I'm saying. I just didn't know through that discussion whether or not we had that clearly defined.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Look.
If I can, and Commissioner, Madam Chair, Commissioner Look, we certainly take that into account also, and I think those issues have been addressed a long time ago. And certainly, as a county attorney, I have no disagreement with the logic of the Supreme Court opinion. We think that was kind of a perverse case. And we here in Minnesota, there's certainly many, many checks and balances, and something like that probably would not occur. But I think your comments are very well taken, and that we certainly, in the prosecution and the law enforcement community, take those into account.
Thank you.
Right, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now we will move on to the Parks Committee. Commissioner Gamache.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Parks Committee met on Tuesday, April 9th. We have two action items. The first is the committee recommends the county board award Anoka County Contract C-0007101 for the construction of city water and sanitary services at the Bunker Hill Central Maintenance Shop to Pember Companies for a total contract amount of $146,276.20. This is obviously to get us tied in with the Andover City Municipal Services that we have not been tied to. And we've been going through this now for a couple of years to get everything set in place, and this was a pretty good contract. We thought we, we came in pretty good, and I will move it.
Right. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savraja.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The next item, the committee recommends the county board award master contracts to the following for professional service, for professional services, wetland delineation and reporting. It's Contract C-0007096 to Midwest Natural Resources, Contract C-0007097 to WSB and Associates, Contract C-0007098 to Hawkinson Anderson, and for geotechnical services and reporting, Contracts C-0007114 Northern Technologies, Contract C-0007115 Braun InterTech, C-0007116 American Engineering Testing, and C-0007117 Haugel? Hugel? I'm not sure how they pronounce that one. Geotechnical Service in Maple Grove. I'll move it.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair, just an audio portion to correct the record. The committee met on April 2nd. You said April 9th, but I just wanted to, that would have meant you met today sometimes.
Busy guy.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm assuming there are dollar amounts attached to these particular contracts, and they're on file or not?
Master contracts.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the board, good morning. My name is Jeff Perry, Park Director for Anoka County, and Attorney Palumbo, that is correct. They are, there are specific hourly rates associated with each master contract.
Okay. That's all I have, Commissioner.
Thank you, and do we have a motion? Okay, a second? Yep, that's right. And further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savraja.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then we had two action items, Madam Chair, that I think we should just have a brief conversation about. We reviewed and approved the posting of the Chamonix Golf Course Transparency Portal on the Anoka County's website, and we're really looking for that coming up as the golf course actually opens, so that, you know, we're not bringing in much money right now with the weather as it is, and what it's going to be like in the next couple of days, apparently. But we got a sample of that. It looked really great. I think it's going to give those who are interested a real idea of how things are going, are moving forward with the, with the golf course, and how we're showing them exactly what's coming in, what's going out, so everybody can stay on top of it. So that was really great. I appreciate that from our finance people and the budgetary thing. Patty showed us, Patty Hedrick showed us the, what it looked like, and we're really excited about it. And then we had a really good discussion about wave pool replacements. We've got some issues, obviously, with the wave pool. It's going to be just fine for this year, but there are some replacements that need to be done to that, in the mechanism that actually creates the waves. They are now almost 30 years old, I believe. And also some cracking in certain places due to the weather of the state of Minnesota. And we looked at some options from a company, and I think we came up with one that is both will, will allow the wave pool to continue and allow us to maybe even see some additional revenue coming in for, for different things, but also is economically feasible. We kind of wanted to balance all of that together, and I believe we're now moving that on to Finance Committee next. Okay. And that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Meisner?
Yes, I would like to comment about the number three, putting up the transparency portal. So I would like to thank Commissioner Gamache and the Finance Department and the Parks Department. I think I was literally two or three weeks into the job when the potential closing of Chamonix came out, and the community really rallied to, to keep it open. And I commend Commissioner Savraja for listening and putting in this three-year plan in place. And I remember at the Parks Committee, there was a gentleman who was asking about, you know, where can I see these financials? And it turned out that, you know, it was either really convoluted to find on our website, or they had to ask for a data request. So at that point, I, I really wanted to initiate something that was really simple, that the public could, you know, look and engage in. And so with Commissioner Gamache and the Finance Department, they've helped to do that. And so I think that this is wonderful. I mean, the public should be able to easily access the information. But also, it's a two-way street, in my opinion, as well. So because the community really wants to keep this open, they can now look in real time how things are going, and if they want to participate in the health of Chamonix, they can be having business here, they can be telling their networks. So again, I think that's a two-way street, because this county board can only do so much to ensure the health of it. It's really up to the community to show up and make sure that it continues. So again, thank you. I think that was really important, a small step, but I think that'll make a big difference for community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. And Jeff, as long as we're talking about Chamonix, do you want to give us an update on the new hire?
Absolutely. Madam Chair, members of the board, the new hire will start next Monday, April 15th. He comes to us from Southern California, a wealth of knowledge and experience, and I think he's going to bring some new ideas and some good leadership to Chamonix Golf Course.
Thank you. So as we had talked about, as part of the plan was to bring someone in whose background was actually running a golf course and had that professional level of experience, and obviously this individual has that. And so we are really looking forward to, you know, new thoughts and ideas and things that might help to make that golf course even more successful. So thank you very much. All right, now we will move on to consider the following resolutions related to Anoka County's 2019 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program, and authorizing submission of such grant requests to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. And Renee, I don't know if you wanted to speak to this at all?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. The information is outlined in your Board Agenda item. Basically, what I'm looking for today is the approval of our annual 2019 Action Plan and the funding recommendations in it, and then along with the ability to submit our annual action plan. What I need from you this morning is Exhibit A with ACAP activity only. Commissioner West was identified as serving on the board, so needing a vote with her abstaining on the first one, and then all of the board on the second item with minus the ACAP activity.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I offer Resolution 2019-45?
Yes, resolution has been offered. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
I abstain because I hold a seat on the ACAP Board.
Commissioner Savraja.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there an offer, offer of Resolution 2019-46 for all other activities?
I'll offer it.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Gamache. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Savraja.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is to consider Resolution 2019-47, the process for replacement of the county administrator position. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I will offer it.
Resolution has been offered. Is there further discussion? Mr. Meisner?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I, I really want to thank Commissioner Look for initiating the public workshop that helped us to figure out a way forward. Clearly, we need to figure out what the next steps are for this, and I believe that we've found something that we can all agree upon. And I'd like to point out that this is a really big deal for Anoka County. There has not been a hiring process in place for our county administrators since the 1980s. So in my opinion, this is real progress. I also want to state that I truly want to find the best person for this job, and so I'm just going to share a few key points that I felt were important in order to find the right person for the job, but did not make the final cut. Because there was some strong commentary made at the last board meeting, I do feel now that the best way to find qualified candidates is to include an external search. We have a lot of qualified talent in our cities and our private sectors that should be considered, but that was not agreed upon. My colleagues felt strongly that an internal process would continue to be the, the best process in place. Commissioner Gamache and I did advocate then to expand the definition of internal candidate. This was agreed upon, so now this does include past county employees who have been with the county five years or less and are in good standing. I did strongly advocate for all six commissioners to be part of the interview process. The county administrator position is a unique and important position, and has been the exception to the rule so far in every other way. I do not believe that this should go in through the committee process as our regular business does. Simply, this should be an equal opportunity for all six commissioners to decide who we think the best person for the job is. This was not agreed upon. I then did advocate for the three commissioners who moved an impartial process to be on the subcommittee, which would be Commissioner Look, Commissioner Gamache, and myself. This was not agreed upon. So the three commissioners that will be part of the interviewing subcommittee are Vice Chair, Commissioner Schulte, Management Chair, Commissioner West, and Commissioner Gamache. I tried my best to advocate for what is important for District Four, Fridley, Columbia Heights, Hilltop, and part of Spring Lake Park. And although we did not get everything we wanted, we did get a lot. As Commissioner West said at the end of our workshop, that we all walked away with something that we wanted. And I do want to sincerely thank my colleagues, every single one of us. We worked really hard, and we all compromised to find a solution, and I will be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, thank you. I, I think there's always been a process for this, and what we're advocating for here is a change of process, which is, okay. The, you know, given some of the, some of the, the way, some of the discussion thus far, I think there's some, some reason for a change of process. That's fine. What I will say is, for those of us who have worked in other political realms and seen other political cultures, that I will put Anoka County's culture above every other culture I've ever been in. And I expected when I first came here that this culture was going to be very similar to the other ones I came in, that I had experience with, and, and I was wrong, because the, the culture we have here is exceptional. And it's that culture that I think personally I want to try and preserve. And when you bring people in from the outside, you risk at that point losing that culture. And so that's primarily the reason why I think we do have qualified talent internally, and we should be tapping that resource long before we take that risk and go externally. The work session, I think, was important for consensus reasons. We had some disagreements on this issue, and, and that's fair. Everyone can have their opinion. But in the work session, we could come to that consensus, and we did, in fact, come to a consensus. Where all six members could, you know, they didn't get everything they wanted, they didn't lose everything either, and so there was some gain, some loss, but ultimately, at the end of the day, we came to an agreement whereby we could all feel comfortable moving forward. And I think that that's, that's good. That's good in an organization such as like this, that, that people can, can agree and move forward. And so, you know, from, from that work session we had, I, I'm very happy with the outcome. I'm happy with the new process that we have in place under, under this given circumstance. And I'm not, you know, I don't know that I would say we need to move forward with this process forever into perpetuity, but, but certainly given the circumstances of this time here and now, I'm okay with this process and happy with, with the outcome thus far. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Gamache.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, I think we had some really good discussion with both at our, our previous board meeting, where Commissioner Look had talked about this is transparency. We're talking about, about what we, what we wanted to do, and I thought that was a very good conversation we had that day. And then, of course, at our, at our, at our workshop we had as well, we had some really good conversation as to a number of different aspects of what we've got together here. And so I appreciate all that was discussed. I appreciate all, from our staff level, getting all of this put together. They still have the work to do on, on getting ready for the actual posting and everything, so I appreciate the, the hard work that they've put in on this as well. This has been, this is, is always, this is always a difficult process when you're, when you're appointing a city administrator, a county administrator, everything. Being involved in two of them over the, over a number of years as mayor, there's, it was never easy, but it was always an interest, you always came through with some very interesting findings and, and realizations of, of your work, working with other people within your, within the, the group that you're in. So I'm looking forward to that, and appreciate being on this three-person committee. We'll do some interviewing, and, and it'll be interesting to have discussions with each one of those, each person that decides to, to provide their application and their resumes and everything, and I'm looking forward to that. It'll be, it'll be nice. And, and I appreciate the work that everybody here has done on the board and also with city staff, with county staff, so looking forward to it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further discussion? Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to echo some of Commissioner Look's sentiments. I do not want to belittle that, again, this, this is a big deal. We do have a process in place, a new process in place, that has not been happening since the 1980s. So this is a, this is a big deal and a good thing, and healthy debate, I think, is, is important. I know my colleagues have all encouraged that and respected that, and so that, that has not been the, the problem, and I'm really glad to be part of this discussion and, and move forward together with this. Thank you.
Commissioner Schulte?
Madam Chair, I would just suggest that it's not the measure of a board, whether you disagree or whether you have different thoughts. And when there's a separation, as there was on our previous board meeting with the three to three split, the measure is how you get past that, how you compromise, how you come to a conclusion, and how you work together in the subsequent years. That's the measure of character. That's the measure of how a board functions. And I think we're strong from that capacity. I think we'll come back from this and be better than ever, and I look forward to that. Thank you.
Right. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Savaraja.
And if there is... So yes, there was an additional agenda item for informational purposes, an update on legislative issues by Representative Kurt Dowd, the minority leader of the Minnesota House of Representatives. They got called into session, so he will not be in attendance, so I'll pull that item from the agenda. And if there is nothing else to come before the county board, meeting is adjourned.
The HRA will convene in, is everybody good at 20 minutes, too, or do you want to wait till quarter to?
20 is good for me.
Yeah.
We'll convene in about three minutes, two minutes.